Folks, I'd like to call the June 5 meeting of the Bristol Tennessee City Council to order this evening. The, Teri, I'll let you go ahead and do the roll call and then we'll make some introductions.
Counselor Dolan?
Yes, I'm here.
Counselor Fire Robin?
Here.
Ms. State.
Here.
Ms. Sheumaker?
Here.
Counselor Zandi?
Here.
Thank you, Teri. This evening, we've got, we've got several folks visiting with us. We've got Matt from our waste treatment plant, and we've got Judd Berry from our library, we've got folks from the chamber. We're voting on several budgetary things this evening. We appreciate everybody coming to be here with us this evening. This evening, giving our invocation is Reverend Barbara Clark from Anderson Street United Methodist Church. Now Barbara is a native Chattanooga, like my wife, but she's been in Bristol pastoring through her flock there at Anderson Street for the past six years. And giving our pledge this evening is Michelle Dolan. So folks, if you would, join with us if will please stand for our invocation.
Blessed art thou, O Lord, our God, Creator of the universe, Creator of this community. We recognize you as the source of every blessing in our lives. In you, O God, we find the gift of life. We place our hope in you. In God, we grieve the trampled lives of people who are shunned, abused, oppressed, forgotten in our communities. In God, we vow to serve the weak and lobby for the dispossessed. And if we find out how and when to show them they are not alone, we will not proudly be their voice, but humbly help them find their own. Their kindness, anger, or distrust are angels calling us to see the fear and the need to have and hold that frame our own captivity. In God we live, and life is more than learning love and doing good. So we praise and pray and trust in God, who makes the earth our neighborhood. And so I pray blessings upon the community of Bristol, that God's peace and prosperity might be received by all. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Michelle. And Pastor Clark, before you get out of here, I just want to thank you for your service to Bristol. Pastor Clark will be leaving at the end of June to go back to school and taking, taking another little road in life. And Barbara Clark is, is just one of those individuals that, that in the short time that she's been with us in Bristol, has made a significant impact in that church, in the community that church sits in, and in the greater Bristol community. You will be sorely missed by this community. Joel State, a member of that church, would you like to say?
Barbara, over the past several years, your friendship has meant a lot to us at the church and in the neighborhood of Anderson Street. Your help with the weed and seed, the neighborhood watch, and everything has made that area grow. And we appreciate it from the city and from myself, and I appreciate your friendship throughout the years. And probably shouldn't have embarrassed Barbara like that, but too bad.
It wouldn't be the first time, Joel.
I know.
Folks, I want to welcome everyone here this evening. If, if you're here to speak on any of the issues that we have on our agenda, I'll remind you to wait till those come up on the agenda. If you're here to speak about anything that you've got on your mind that is not part of our agenda, you'll have an opportunity to do that also. I'll remind folks that if you do speak to the council on something that's not on the agenda, typically, we don't respond back to you during the meeting, but I can assure you, your issues will be dealt with by staff and council and our city manager, Jeff Broughton. So again, thank you so much. Ms. Broughton, are there any agenda changes, additions, or deletions?
Nope, the agenda is complete as distributed.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Proclamations and recognitions. The first thing up on our agenda this evening is recognition, 2012 Pinnacle Awards. And Ms. Terry Talbert is going to give us, give us that, or Ms. Broughton, are you going to?
No, I think Terry's going to do it.
I, I hope all of you had the opportunity to see the wonderful article about Ms. Talbert in the paper today, one of the series on important women in the area. We've actually have several in attendance this evening, including Sherri Brown and Margaret Fire Robin, who's made that list. But Terry, wonderful article and, and all the contributions you've made in the last, we won't say how many years with the city, but.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you again for the opportunity to stand before you. Each year, our marketing professionals gather from throughout the region to basically have a contest, to see who is the best and brightest in the different categories. There are several categories. Most of you know these as the NEDA, through NEDA, Northeast Tennessee Tourism Association, and they're called the Pinnacle Awards. We've been competing in them, I think, for about 10 years now. This year, we competed with professionals from the counties of Carter, Green, Hancock, Hawkins, Johnson, Sullivan, Unicoi, and Washington County in Tennessee. In Virginia, it was Lee Scott, Washington, and Wise Counties in Virginia, and all the cities and other agencies within those areas. This year, the Department of Community Relations is very proud to bring to you, although they're on my desk tonight, I apologize, the two Pinnacle Awards and the Award of Merit that was presented to us. One of the Pinnacles was received in recognition of a piece produced by our government channel producer, Mr. Jack Dunham, who's running the camera in the back tonight. The piece was on the 50th anniversary of BMS, and Senator, former Senator Carl Moore and David McGee from Bristol Newspapers was very kind in helping us gather that history and put it in a format that actually showed a whole lot of the meager beginnings of what started out as a pasture field and what has now turned into one of the largest in the country as far as a sporting stadium, and what that has meant to this community. And we were very proud to show that last year, and then we went back and did a couple of things with it this year, and showed it again during racing season. And we plan on doing that for a few years, so when our visitors are in town, they realize from what it came. And it's an amazing story, and we owe much thanks to Senator Carl Moore and to David McGee. This was not the first award won by Mr. Dunham. He's brought home, if you'll recall, a first-place Savvy Award, which is a national award, this past year for some of the other work that he's done at the station. And we just got through entering another piece for him and Mr. Scott Evans as well in the Savvies. The second Pinnacle was received in recognition of the 2011 Farmer's Market poster. Each year for the past few years, if you'll recall, we've been doing a Farmer's Market poster. In the past couple of years, we've actually done a series because that caught on. The first weekend, the first Saturday of the month, we give away a new poster, and it's limited edition. You have to come to the market. It doesn't cost you anything, but when they're gone, they're gone. And you collect all six and you have the series. And from what I understand from Mr. Napier, that continues this year, and there's beautiful posters that are out there now. And I think you're in your second month, right, Terry? The 2011 posters were designed not only with the market in mind, but the history of State Street. And we always have felt that is very important to what we're trying to push downtown, is there's so much history down there, if you just walk around and look. So we felt like that was important, and we did it in a Cypia background, as you'll see, but the market's all about fresh fruits and vegetables. So we added that to it, and this is what we came up with. And I think this was the first market, or first of the season of the market. We did this one in May of last year. Anyway, that kind of laid the backdrop for the poster. We put the vegetables on the front, and I think there's maybe 100 or so left in total of the entire set. So if anybody needs a set, let us know. They're going very fast, and we hope to issue possibly, we have three series, and to get all those together, and you can pick those up at one time as well. We also won an Award of Merit, which was given in a category where there's only a few points between a Pinnacle winner and an Award of Merit. And we won this one for the 30th anniversary of Viking Hall. We, the only thing that you see up there right now is the poster. We also did TV ads, we did billboards, we did flyers, anything you can think, any place we could find to talk about the 30th anniversary of Viking Hall, we did. And as I say, this won the Award of Merit. In conclusion, I'm very proud to say that I've had the opportunity for 30 years to work with some very, very intelligent people when it comes to marketing, not just within the city, but to be up against the competition you're up against is amazing. And sometimes I'll walk away just breathless that we actually walked away with some awards. But I must say, too, that we appreciate how much council gives to our department in allowing us to do the things that we do. It's always interesting to see how some of them turn out sometimes. Some of them turn out as planned, and some of them don't, but we're very proud of it. And I'll have to say, this is the ninth award, I think, that we've brought to council. And again, I'm very lucky to be able to work in a department with a group of very creative people. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Terry, thank you so much. I was just going to ask how many Pinnacles you've won.
Well, that includes the four awards that we had won in another category, not Pinnacle, and then the three Savvies we brought home from last year. So altogether, I think we've brought five Pinnacles home.
All right, congratulations, Terry. Fantastic.
Thank you very much.
We don't have any other presentations this evening, so we'll move right on to public hearings. Ms. Broughton, if you'll tell us about the first one.
Sure. We have two public hearings. The first one is the amendment of the 2012 appropriation ordinance. As the council is aware, and for the benefit of those in the, in the room tonight, each year, the city finds, usually at the very end of the year, June being the end of this year, where there are additional spending needs that weren't identified when the budget was adopted 12 months earlier, that need to be, where we need to adjust our appropriation authority to reflect those increased spending needs. This year, we have five funds that require an increase of varying amounts. They include the General Fund, Community Development Grant Fund, Solid Waste Fund, State Street Aid Fund, and the Capital Project Facilities Fund. For the most part, the, the timing expenditures gives rise to the increased appropriations. In one case, a grant that wasn't factored in was received and required an additional appropriation and so forth. None of this is unusual. It's routine, and all of those numbers are built into our, into the budget that we developed for the year to start, and so there's no surprises going in in terms of how that might affect a future budget or future fund balances that support the various funds that we have. This is slightly changed from what you saw at first reading. We went back, as we always do, as we get another 30 days of time under our belt, to see if what we thought 30 days ago still makes sense, because we want to be over, don't want to be under an appropriation. And so this reflects a couple of minor changes that have come about in the, in the last 30 days. But in any event, routine matter with your approval, well, with the closing of the public hearing and approval at second reader, reading later in the agenda, we'll move through the 2012 budget and prepare to enter into the 2013. So with that, I'll be happy to answer. With that, Mr. Mayor, be appropriate to accept public comments on public hearing number one.
Thank you, Ms. Broughton. I will entertain any comments from the public on this matter. This public hearing is now open. Anyone wish to speak on this particular matter? Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing, and we'll go to the next one, Mr. Broughton.
Second public hearing is, speaks to the adoption of the 2012 tax rate and the budget and appropriation for the fiscal year 2013, which is the year that starts on July 1, 2012. Again, this is the public hearing that's required under Tennessee code to comply with requirements for the establishment of a tax rate and approval of appropriations for the upcoming year. The 2012 tax rate, that is before the city council this year, is unchanged, as it was, is unchanged now for the 13th consecutive year in a row. It'll be $2.19 per $100 of assessed valuation. What that means to a house that is appraised, that has a market value of $100,000, is that person would pay $547 in city taxes for all the city services that they receive. We believe, and I hope everybody that lives here recognizes what a value that is for the services that are being provided in return. The budget, that is before the city council, for 2013 totals a little over $109 million, which is an increase of $21 million from last year, which is almost a 25% increase. That number may sound a bit scary, but when we break it down a little bit further, it's very understandable and, and makes sense for our community. If you look at that, $110 million, $109 million, about 70 million of that goes to support municipal operations, and 38 million will support the Bristol Tennessee, Bristol Tennessee City School System. Next slide, Sherri. As I mentioned, the, the budget is about 25% higher than last year, but we have a placeholder amount in the budget, which is actually $25 million, and that's for a potential project under the authority of Chapter 420. Don't know if we'll have a 420 project, don't know how much it might be if we have one, could be nothing, could be 25 million, who knows, but it's a placeholder amount. So if you, if you, if you pull that number out for purposes of just true comparison, 2013, the year we're going into, to the year we're coming out of, we're actually about 4% less than last year, about $3.4 million less. So our budget, when you compare it to last year on a true apples-to-apples comparison basis, is less than last year, about 4% less. And the primary reason that it's less is because of the larger-than-normal amount of capital project spending that we made this year for our school system. Many of those projects are being completed. We don't have the same level of projects planned next year, and that, and that for all practical purposes is the reason our budget, on an apples-to-apples comparison, is less this year than it was last year. With that, Mr. Mayor, it would be appropriate to accept public comment regarding the tax budget and appropriation ordinance as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. I'll open up the public hearing on this year's tax rate. Anyone wish to speak to this particular issue? Anyone in attendance wish to speak about this particular matter? Hearing none, I'll close this public hearing, and we'll move on then. Actually, the next thing on our agenda is appearance of citizens. If you are here this evening and wish to speak to council about anything that's on your mind that's not on the agenda, now would be the appropriate time to do so. Come to the microphone, state your name and where you live, and, and we welcome your Quiet in the house this evening. We'll move on then to.
I'm sorry, I thought I was supposed to.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Wait. You're right. As.
I live at 1628 Sixth Street Extension. I'll briefly summarize only the most relevant issues in the past tumultuous month of May 2012. On 5-1, I addressed the Bristol Tennessee City Council for the first time with my concerns about illegal activities perpetrated by my neighbors across the street, spanning approximately four to five years now. These illegal activities have been compounded and intensified within the past 12 months with the arrival of one or more pit bulls, which I personally have seen documented and reported to the police department for running at large on nine separate occasions. During six of the nine times, one or both pit bull mixes have actually been on my property threatening me with severe bodily harm or death. The people themselves and their rowdy visitors have also been threatening, and they have chosen to present themselves verbally as clear threats to my physical safety. I also presented to city council on 5-1 my experience of the absolute dearth of police and animal control patrols to both serve as a deterrent and to be able to press charges themselves when they saw illegal activities happening. On 5-4, I met with Bristol Tennessee city officials, and I have only praise for Chief Wade, who represented both the police department and the city of Bristol, Tennessee, well. As city council members, you will be glad to hear that our Bristol Tennessee Chief of Police was both punctilious and au courant. His comments could best be characterized as being salutary and perspicacious. Any taxpayer would deem his behavior to be appropriate, because the city is actually a business with taxpayers as its customers. I came to the meeting on 5-4 with city officials, therefore simply as a customer, who had already paid for services and was merely requesting the delivery of these long overdue services. Chief Wade kindly assured me on 5-4 that the police department was, in fact, fully cognizant of the illegal activities across the street from me, that I would henceforth have a highly visible police presence to impact these illegal activities, and that I was free to carry whatever I felt I needed to attempt to protect myself from harm from the aggressive dogs. He also advised me that when I needed public records, that I was to call Virginia Smelser to set an appointment so she and I could sit down together, and she would pull up my needed records while I waited. We are still working on the implementation of my having such access to public records. Again, I want to thank Chief Wade for his salutary and au courant remarks on 5-4. After that meeting with city officials on 5-4, I reasonably anticipated the rapid arrival of my promised highly visible police presence to ameliorate the ongoing illegal activities and provide me with some measure of safety. Unfortunately for me, however, I saw not one police officer, police car, or animal control truck on my street between 5-1, when I addressed city council, and 5-13, two weeks later, when I emailed a mid-month update to all five city council members. Unfortunately for me, instead of my seeing my promised and eagerly anticipated highly visible police presence, what I did see during that two-week timeframe was no fewer than 12 separate examples of illegal parking at 1739, or 1741, and Chad shouting demeaning remarks to me from across the street, on one occasion, when he observed that I was cautiously watching the untethered dog near him in the yard at 1741. Now Chad lives at 1739, and I have learned that I must be ever on guard about their untethered dogs running at large, because they are so consistently irresponsible about their animals. I do not complain to the police or even to my church about the loyal rock music often emanating from 1739, and mention it now only to note the consideration, or lack thereof, demonstrated by the people at 1739. Between 5-1 and 5-14, I was rocked down, as it were, by unknown parties at 1739 on seven different occasions. It is not possible, practical, or reasonable for me to spend all day, every day, sitting on my front porch, monitoring my street for my promised highly visible police presence. And I logically do not need to do so because, because the continuing illegal parking during that two-week timeframe makes it very clear that there were no police officers on my street, because Sergeants Brown and Emery had previously sent emails to all officers in 2011 saying that those parking illegally across from me would no longer be asked to move, and would be cited to deter continued illegal parking. The presence of the clearly visible illegal parking during the two-week timeframe, therefore, constitutes clear evidence of the lack of clearly visible police presence during that same timeframe. That's just common sense. I had emailed a mid-month update on 5-13 reflecting what I had just covered, and I thought surely I would begin seeing police officers on 5-14, the day after my mid-month update to city council. I had hoped that city council members would trigger the police to begin patrolling my street after my 5-13 email to them. Instead of the arrival of police and animal control on 5-14, I had a silver car illegally parked in front of 1739 from 3:35 PM to 4:05 PM, which partially blocked my driveway, so I just sat on my porch and waited to be able to leave to continue my errands. Also, at 6:03 that same day, 5-14, I heard the woman at 1741, that's the house right next door, the little white house, screeching at one of her dogs named Maggie to get back into his yard, because he was untethered and failed to respond to voice command, and had gone right after five to 10 skateboarders trying to get down my street. At 6:42 that same day, 5-14, a black car pulled in front of 1739 and parked illegally. So instead of seeing a highly visible police presence after emailing city council members on 5-13, on 5-14, I continued, I had continuing illegal parking, partially blocking my driveway and precluding my being able to come and go freely from my own personal property, and yet another vicious aggressive dog being allowed to run at large without tether and without being responsive to voice commands, as it went right after these innocent young people, trusting that public streets in Tennessee are safe enough to use. So I updated the five city council members about what happened in just that one day, 5-14. I have great respect for our esteemed Bristol Tennessee City Council. After repeated attempts, I have been unable to speak with four of the five city council members during the latter half of the month of May. Ladies and gentlemen, you choose to be paid city council members and to represent the citizens of Bristol, of which I am one. Therefore, as one of your constituents, I ask you nicely and courteously pleased to be interested enough in what is happening in an already identified problem spot in Bristol, Tennessee, to return my calls to you. Thank you, and God bless you for understanding the need. Ben Zandi is not one of the four to whom I just spoke. I have intentionally left Ben Zandi for last in order to highlight his many contributions in protecting me and serving all of Bristol. From the very first time when I met Ben Zandi, and he graciously rose to his feet and greeted me with a warm smile and handshake, he has been unfailingly warm, responsive, and concerned just as a model city councilman should be in serving his constituents. He responded to my email on 5-13 and 5-14 by reporting that he was driving by my house then twice a day, and had contacted city officials on my behalf. I could not have hoped for more, but I did receive more from Mr. Zandi. On 5-27, I was in my yard and heard my name called. I was glad to look up and see that it was Ben Zandi, who again was smiling, polite, and helpful. He informed me at that time that he was now patrolling my street three to four times per day to be sure I was safe. That is actually what he said to me. "I come by your house, Ms. Whitaker, to be sure you are safe." How kind, Mr. Zandi. Thank you so much. Bless you. Ben Zandi stands in contrast with the four city council members who have opted not to respond to my request to speak with them during the latter half of the month. Mr. Zandi's assistant shared with me, because Mr. Zandi's a modest man, that Ben Zandi works 12 to 14 hours a day on his businesses. I identify with these long hours, because I am doing the same to develop my ministry to homeless women in Bristol. Additionally, this very busy man has very conscientiously expended his time and energy to protect me, a fragile elderly senior citizen whom he knows needs and pays for city services. I think of him every time I see my favorite porcelain guardian angel. I brought this, Mr. Zandi, to, to honor you. My favorite porcelain guardian angel. And I honor him for choosing, yes, choosing to function as a guardian angel in addition to all that he is already doing. Ben Zandi enhances the city council by his presence and serves as a blessing to it and to all of Bristol. Bristol is indeed fortunate to have a man with the stature of Ben Zandi on the city council. I am also blessed by the prayers of protection from those in my small group Bible study with whom I meet on Monday night, and my entire church through intercessory prayer every Wednesday night. I can only assume that their prayers have kept me from becoming a chew toy for the aggressive dogs. Now to continue, no one enjoys being maligned.
Ms. Whitaker.
I'm almost through, sir.
Thank you.
Now to continue, no one enjoys being maligned by repeatedly being addressed as crazy or psycho, as Chad at 1739 does to me. But opinions are ultimately like, shall we say, like noses. Everyone has one. Because I do believe that all things really do work for good for those who love the Lord, I have looked for the good to come from this evil and believe I have. I have looked for the good to come from this evil and believe I have found it. When Chad at 1739 makes these derogatory evaluations, he is actually helping me in two ways. One is he is making it very clear that I have done absolutely nothing wrong. If I had, then that is what he would keep hammering. I myself have actually heard Chad and Carla, who live at 1731, on not one but three separate occasions repeatedly petitioned police officers for answers about what they could charge me with. The most amusing one was the day that they failed to appear in city court, but they did manage to corner Officer Still, whom I admire and respect, and I actually heard them ask Officer Still if they could charge me with this, or that, or another charge.
Ms. Whitaker-
I'm almost through, sir. I'm almost through.
But you're speaking, you're speaking about folks who are your neighbors and do not have an opportunity to respond this evening like you do.
I agree.
And I'm very hesitant to let you continue without them having the opportunity to speak on their behalf. So can you please wrap this up?
Yes, sir. I'm actually doing so to try to alert city council. My guess is that they will contact you and other city council members. I think that because on or about May 25th, I heard Chad talking, they talk very loudly, talking with the neighbor, and they've contacted the Chief of Police. They said that the chief had told them that I was afraid, which is true, of the dogs. My guess is that you're next. So I'm trying to let you know that these people are going to tell you that I'm a psycho, that I'm crazy, and that it's actually a blessing, because it tells you I've done nothing. So I'll just summarize with that. I have done nothing. If so, they would be hammering that. I mean, that's just logical. That's common sense. Okay. The other one I think you'll be interested in is the neighbor on the other side of him on the 25th. 25th was an interesting day.
Ms. Whitaker.
Yes, sir.
You're right at about 15 minutes now.
Okay. I'm sorry, I haven't been able to contact city council. I have tried for almost half a month, so I'm sorry. It's been very frustrating.
Can you wrap it up without talking anymore about any particular neighbors, please?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I did want to tell you that one had thrown waste, animal waste, on their porch, but if you don't want to know, that's fine. Okay. What, in summary, please allow me to trust that you will be certain my time and energy is no longer diverted from the development of my ministry to Bristol's homeless women by, one, please demonstrating an interest in my Bristol, Tennessee problem spot by returning phone calls I make to you. Number two, please stay in contact with other city officials to ensure that I continue to have visible police and animal control presence. Number three, last one, please encourage police cars and animal controls to make a slight detour down my street. I see them on the volunteer parkway. It'd be simple to make a slight detour, and I was going to tell you about the great example they gave me tonight. I almost was not able to come because of illegal parking this very night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Whitaker. Is there anyone else who wishes to address city council this evening on a matter that is not on our agenda? Seeing none, then we're moving on to appointments. Housing and redevelopment authority is the only thing that we have on the agenda this evening.
I'd like to make a request that we continue. Several of us have been talking to some different folks, and I know somebody I just talked to this week that explored it and talked to Steve Seifer, the housing director, and Donna Felty, who's the chairperson, decided that they were unable to do it at this time, so I would like for us to leave it open and to continue to see if we can find the best person for that board.
Jack, is it best to do a motion in second to just postpone this, or just-
I think it would be a motion to postpone indefinitely until it comes back.
Is that a motion, Morgan?
Yes. That's a motion to postpone indefinitely.
May I, may I weigh in on that before you all move forward? When the council established its policy and procedure manual, the, as it relates to the appointment of members to boards, the ballot was specifically created so that you would have a choice of any person who submitted an application in timely fashion, or where you could accept none of those. And typically, the way the council will act if they don't have a candidate that they're ready to put on a board is to vote for none of the above, and that takes a person out of suspense that's seeking a position, allows us to notify that person that although they weren't selected, please look for other opportunities to serve, and it doesn't keep extending this into time. That would be typically the way this would be processed if you choose to go the other direction, of course you may, but that is, the ballot was specifically designed to address the situation that I seem to think you're facing right now.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Broughton. Maker of the motion, would you like to withdraw that motion?
I'll withdraw that motion.
And second?
I never got that far.
All right.
And I'll just say, I've tried to, most of the time I try to talk to people, sometimes I don't, but, and encourage, and that's for all the boards and commissions, and encourage them to make some inquiry, find out if that is something they would like to do, and if I don't hear back from them at all, or check with them and find out that they are no longer interested.
And with the ballots that I have in my possession, Mr. Zandi votes for none of the above, Ms. Fire Robin votes for none of the above, Mr. Stateen votes for none of the above, Mr. Shoemaker votes for none of the above, and Ms. Dolan votes for Mr. Huddleston. With three votes for none of the above, we do not have an appointment, and we will re-advertise and try to have candidates for the July meeting.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Broughton. Next on our agenda is ordinances and resolutions, first reading of new ordinances. Ms. Broughton, if you'll tell us about ordinance 12-7.
Ordinance number 12-7 is an ordinance to amend sections 220, 203, and 502 of the zoning ordinance relating to adult-oriented establishments. I'm going to ask Jack to take the lead on this.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This involves a proposed amendment to section 220 of the zoning ordinance. That's a section that concerns adult-oriented establishments, and the purpose of the proposed amendment is to bring our regulations up to date to conform with certain changes in Tennessee law, as well as federal court rulings that have evolved over the last few years. As you're probably aware, some forms of adult entertainment are considered an element of free speech, and they do have some protection under the First Amendment to the U.S. Constitution. Therefore, a city cannot ban these businesses outright, but there are ways that you can regulate where they locate within the city. You have numerous studies and court rulings over the years, going back 30 to 40 years even, have shown that these type of businesses result in negative secondary effects in the community. They typically result in increased crime, prostitution, potential spread of disease, public indecency, illegal drug use, decline in property values, and sexual offenses. And as a result of those adverse secondary effects, it is proper to try to limit the location of these businesses, and that's what this particular ordinance is designed to do. Type of businesses we're talking about that are classified under this ordinance as adult-oriented establishments would include adult bookstore, an adult cabaret, adult mini motion picture establishment, adult motion picture theater, escort service, sexual encounter center, a rap parlor, an exotic dance studio, and what's known as a sensitivity studio. All of these have specific definitions, some of which are rather graphic. Under this proposed ordinance, then, the adult-oriented establishments would be allowed in two business zones. It would be in the B3, our general business, and also in the M2, the general industrial zoning district. But there are certain restrictions, and the restrictions are important. They are really the heart of the ordinance. First of all, in either of these two districts, the adult-oriented establishment would have to be at least 1,000 feet from any of the following: a childcare facility, a school, park, a family recreation center, a residence, a place of worship, a funeral home, a library, a hospital, a liquor store, or a residentially zoned property. Secondly, one of these businesses could not be located within a half a mile of another one of the businesses. Thirdly, we would not allow these businesses inside our border region retail tourism development district that's out at the exit 74 area. And fourthly, if one of these businesses were to be in a B3 district, that's the general business district, it would have to be located on one of our arterial streets, and that means the major highway streets typically Volunteer Parkway, Highway 394, Highway 421, or State Street. Those then are the four main requirements under the new proposed ordinance. The ordinance also includes a couple of housekeeping amendments. Section 203 of the zoning ordinance would be amended. That is a definition section. We would eliminate some of our existing definitions and then plug in, in lieu of those, the state law definitions for these types of businesses. Secondly, section 502 of the zoning ordinance, which is the M2 industrial zoning district, the statement of purpose in that provision would be amended to reflect that the M2 district can have uses other than manufacturing. This proposed ordinance was considered by the Planning Commission and was recommended to city council by unanimous vote. I will be happy to answer any questions you may have on the ordinance. If you have questions about the nature of these businesses or what goes on inside them, I will not be able to help you on that.
Thank you, Jack. Is there any clarification needed by any member of council? Any questions or clarification needed? Hearing none, is there anyone in attendance this evening that wishes to speak to city council on this particular matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Move to approve.
Second?
I was first.
Terry and I both need to know who had that one, so thank you, Ben. Ben's a little quicker on the draw there. Okay, so we've got Margaret, thank you, and Ben. Is there any additional discussion by city council on this particular matter? I have one question. What is a rap parlor? Is that something you don't want to explain?
I can read you the definition.
I just, I can't let that one go. I thought I knew all this stuff at least a little bit, so.
A rap parlor means an establishment or place of business primarily in the business of providing non-professional conversation or similar services for adults.
I think the similar services is probably what gets you in trouble. All right, I have no other questions. Any other discussion?
Just, this was included as an objective in our 2012 goals program, and we recognize through Jack's good work that our ordinance wasn't in conformity with current status of the law, plus our regulations were a little wider open in terms of citing availability than I think this community would expect, and so by this action, the Planning Commission will accomplish the goal of getting it done and tightening it up in a way that it satisfies the legal requirements and protects the interests of this community.
Thank you, Ms. Broughton. Terry, I believe we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to adoption of ordinance's second reading, first up, ordinance 12-3. Mr. Broughton, if you'll tell us about that.
Ordinance number 12-3 is an ordinance amending ordinance number 7-14 relating to the salaries of city council. This action is an item that came out of our budget work session back in April when the council became aware that the current guidelines setting the salary adjustments for city council would result in a salary increase greater than was being made available to our city employees as a body. And because of that recognition, the council asked that we rewrite our regulations, the ordinance controlling how council salaries are adjusted, and that's what this adjustment, that's what this amendment will do. It provides that the increase will never exceed the general wage adjustment provided for city employees in the same fiscal year. The net effect of that is this council adjustment in pay will be a little less than it would have been without passage of this ordinance, but nevertheless, it will result in a 2% wage adjustment for city council in July of 2012, should it pass as is proposed to be amended this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Any clarification needed? Any further questions from Mr. Broughton? Hearing none, is there anyone in attendance who wishes to speak to city council about this particular issue? Hearing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. And thank you, Ben. We have a motion in second, additional discussion. I think not. Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, ordinance 12-4. Mr. Broughton?
Ordinance number 12-4 is an ordinance to abandon, excuse me, an unnamed and unopened public right-of-way across properties at 2037 and 2041 Highway 421. The city staff became aware a month or so ago of a right-of-way that nobody knew existed in the past, and it came about as a result of a survey that was being taken for a subdivision of property in the vicinity of the CenturyLink switching station on Highway 421. Maybe Sherri, you can bring up a drawing. There you go. There's an aerial photograph of the properties of the abandonment that we're speaking about. The CenturyLink, obviously, is highlighted as to its location there on Highway 421. Next slide, Sherri, let's bring it in. What we have proposed is the abandonment of a 20-foot right-of-way. That right-of-way is shown in purple, running through the center of that yellow property line, properties, lines for those properties, and then you can see where it flattens out and it becomes a dark blue and runs basically parallel with the slide. The abandonment of the entire purple and blue right-of-way is recommended to you by the Planning Commission, but it's proposed that we retain easements in the section that's blue and is highlighted with the easement retained. So we will be abandoning a never-open, never-known-existed right-of-way to facilitate the reuse of the property and the subdivision, but retaining an easement in the place where it is appropriate for the city to maintain and have the rights to use for public utilities. Has the Planning Commission looked at this at its April meeting and recommended that you move forward with the abandonment as proposed?
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Is there any clarification needed from staff? Hearing none, is there anyone in attendance this evening who wishes to speak to city council on this particular matter? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Move to approve.
Second.
All right. Thank you, Margaret and Joel. We have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? Ms. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Thank you. Up next, excuse me, ordinance 12-5. We've already had the public hearing on this one, so Mr. Broughton, if you'll go back over that again, please.
Ordinance number 12-5 is an ordinance to amend the appropriation of funds and budget for the fiscal year July 1, 2011 through June 30, 2012. As the mayor just indicated, this was the subject of the first public hearing this evening, and adjusts 2012 appropriations to meet the expected spending needs through the remainder of the year.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you, Margaret.
I'll second.
Thank you, Michelle. We have a motion in a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fire Robin?
Yes.
Thank you. Next up, ordinance 12-6, the other public hearing that we've already had. Mr. Broughton, tell us about this.
Ordinance number 12-6 is an ordinance- Ordinance number 12-6 is an ordinance to establish the property tax rate, adopt the budget, and appropriate funds for the fiscal year July 1, 2012 through June 30, Again, subject of the second public hearing, will retain the tax rate unchanged at $2.19. Will provide about $109 million in spending authority to meet the city and school needs in the coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Broughton. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you, Margaret and Ben. Motion's on the table. Any additional discussion?
I think we've done well to hold our taxes again for this year with our plan that we reevaluate more seriously every four years, and that it's a pretty tight budget and pretty fiscally responsible. And we appreciate what the departments do with working on their budgets and working with TARA, and I think Tim Beevers was part of that team to head up. Anyway, and thank you, Mr. Broughton, for work to keep our budget very reasonable. But again, it's tight, and hopefully, we're going to have better revenue in the next couple of years that we can pick up and carry on some of the areas that we are being skeleton on.
Thank you, Margaret. I'd echo what you said about Mr. Broughton and also include Ms. Terry, music and her staff. Y'all have done a tremendous job on this budget. We thank you. Anyone else?
Same here. I want to thank Mr. Broughton and the county department here that have done a phenomenal job, and I'm excited about next year, and hopefully, we'll have a very aggressive and forward-thinking of growing businesses and attracting families to our town and growing our base revenue so we can be a better service to our city.
Thank you, Ben. Ms. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fireoffend?
Yes.
Next on our agenda are resolutions. Resolution 12-45, Mr. Broughton.
Resolution number 12-45 is a resolution approving an agreement regarding annexation of the Tri-Cities Regional Airport. As the council is aware, the Airport Commission is closing in on finally becoming an airport authority, and as a part of the process leading to the creation of an airport authority, it has become known to some of the owners of the airport that controlling statute regarding the prohibition of any city annexing the Tri-Cities Regional Airport may no longer be operative with the creation of the authority. To remove any ambiguity to the extent it exists in Tennessee code and comfort all of the owners that none of the other, none of the cities will go in and annex the airport itself, this annexation prohibition agreement is being presented to all the owners and all of the governments that could annex where everybody agrees they will not annex unless everybody agrees that it's the right thing to do. So this action, several of the owners have already moved forward with approval of this document. With your approval, will be one of the required numbers, and then once all are in place, and we expect no reason why anybody would object to this and not pass it, that will be pretty much the last hurdle leading to the creation of the authority. So we're very close to the authority. This action's necessary to give comfort to all the owners that nobody's going to take the airport unless everybody thinks it's the right thing to do in terms of bringing it into the city limits.
Thank you, Ms. Broughton. Is there any additional clarification needed from Mr. Broughton or staff?
Who has actually voted on this already?
I believe Johnson City has passed it, and that's the only one I know of, Michelle. I don't expect anybody's going to have any serious reservations. Kingsport is the municipality that's right at the edge of the airport, and this is really as much as anything to keep Kingsport from looking further south. But they may have passed theirs as well, I'm not sure, but I understand that they will.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Broughton. Is there anyone in attendance wish to speak to council on this particular matter? Hearing none, what's the pleasure of council?
Motion to move forward.
Second.
Thank you, Ben and Joel. We have a motion and a second. Do we have additional discussion? Ms. Terry, I think we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Mayor Shoemaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Fireoffend?
Last resolution this evening, excuse me, resolution 12-51, Mr. Broughton.
Resolution number 12-51 is a resolution authorizing payment to the Bristol Public Library. I've asked Judd Barry and Judd's sitting here to join us tonight in the event the City Council had any questions regarding this matter. It's somewhat of a small item, but I felt it was important to bring it to the floor and talk through it because it's unusual in the sense that we annually fund the library to a large amount at the remount that they ask, and this is the first time, at least in my eight years, where there's been a mid-year request to ask the cities without any dialogue with the cities to choose to go to both cities to pay for an expense that could have been paid out of their own budget. And the amount we're talking about is a total of $23,340, one half of which would be ours, one half would be Bristol, Virginia, so we're talking $11,715 in a payment request, a reimbursement request for expenditures incurred by the library. And the work that was done was some repair of concrete in the front plaza area that was required because of spalling and cracking, I suspect. But the issue really is one, when the library board had the option of deciding how to pay for this, they had the choice of using their own budget, and if they exceeded their budget to draw into their reserve funds to the extent they needed to pay for it or to request payment from the cities, and they chose the latter. And so with that, again, I think this conversation should take place because it could set an undesirable precedent where that board, independent of anything else, is saying, "Well, let's fix it, and we'll send a bill to the cities, and they'll pay it." With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any additional clarification needed from staff? Let me throw it then to those folks in attendance this evening. Anyone in attendance this evening wish to speak to City Council on this matter? Seeing none, what's the pleasure of council?
I do have a question. What made the concrete crack start with? I mean, on a new facility, it doesn't seem like the concrete should be cracking already.
It was apparently, there's a patch in our front Piedmont Plaza that was identified. It was probably a bad batch of concrete when it was originally poured. It had taken four, five years for it to start to deteriorate, but it was something that came up fairly quickly, and the board decided it was something that we really couldn't wait for. To give you a little bit more background, one of the reasons, and by the way, I do want to emphasize what Jeff said, this is an unusual request. It's the first time since I've been the library director that we've come to you with this kind of request, and it's something we don't want to do again. To some extent, it reflects the age of the building, the new building, the fact that we've gone into need for long-range facilities maintenance. Last year, as part of the budget process, we had submitted a request apart from our regular operating request that would have given us a bit more money to work with for this kind of thing. It kind of got lost in the shuffle. For next year, what we've done, and partly with the help of Terry Napier from your staff, we've developed, our budget does reflect a slightly higher need for this kind of thing. So we do recognize that it is, we hope and expect to be an anomalous request, and it reflects the unique nature of the timing, the age of the building, and the fact that we are getting into a kind of a new era of need for the building.
Mr. Barry, do you currently have funds available to pay for this?
Well, the funds that Jeff is referring to is the reserve fund for the library board. The library board was given the option to pay for this out of their own reserve fund. The library board has identified that fund as being essentially a kind of a rainy day fund for situations that are entirely, that would be dire in nature, and elected to bring this request forward to you all.
I know when we talk about a new building, it's technically not a new building anymore, but considering it was bad concrete, is there any recourse going back on the contractor that poured it?
It was not under warranty.
Okay, that was, that's what I was going to ask you.
Since we've kind of opened up a dialogue with Mr. Barry here without actually having a motion on the table, I think we're going to continue with this. Mr. Barry, this is the Piedmont entrance, this is the main entrance down there, is that correct? Very seldom during the course of a City Council meeting do I have the opportunity to draw on my day job as a home inspector. I'm assuming you're talking about it's spalling, the surface breaking away, the top quarter-inch flake.
It was worse than spalling. My understanding of spalling is that's a surface deterioration, and this went, this was, it was going down into the concrete itself. It was worse than spalling, is my understanding. And it was, as I say, it was primarily the feeling of the board that we were getting into a hazardous situation because it is a heavily-used part of the plaza. It was the area in between the Piedmont parking lot and the front door, and it was the kind of thing that the board really did not want to wait on.
One of the things that I see on a regular basis on concrete, sidewalks that are heavily-salted begin to, and I think Mr. Sauer may want to weigh in on this one, heavily-salted sidewalks sometimes, it really begins to work on the top surface, what I call spalling of that sidewalk or the concrete that you've got out front. That might be something, once this is fixed, look at what you're putting on it in the wintertime. I'm betting that it gets salted a lot to make sure that folks don't have ice and something.
We did, in specs for this concrete, ask for a sealant that would guard against that.
My point, and excuse me for interrupting, my point never is to question the judgment of the board in that they had a situation they needed to address. That has never been my concern, and I have full confidence that they recognized they had a problem and they acted responsibly to address it. It was simply, you know, the request to us to pay for the repair work, again, off-budget when they have a budget of $1.7 million that's available to take care of library needs.
Is there any other question of Mr. Barry? If not, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Barry. Since we've sort of opened this discussion up again, Margaret, you're the member of this council who sits on that library board. Would you like to weigh in?
I sure would. Yeah, like Mr. Barry said, we're, it's not a new building anymore, so we're moving from having four to five years, pretty grace period of a brand-new building. Anything major was under warranty, so now we're moving in. And I think some of it is a learning curve for the board, it's a learning curve for Mr. Barry, to learn how much we need to budget, et cetera. And also, and so it's a learning curve for doing that, for how much to, and feeling like capital improvements, which this goes beyond what we've seen as maintenance with maintenance contracts, et cetera, to figuring out how to budget for that also, to have that separate because there's a maintenance of effort issue that if it's for operating funds, then you have to maintain that. So we do have scheduled for capital improvements and replacement, major maintenance, et cetera, that trying to work with. Also, part of the learning curve is learning how do we work with the cities because it hasn't been, we haven't done those major maintenance things and have to figure out what's the best way to do that, how do we budget for it, how do we present that, when do we need to present it, how much do we need to figure out, et cetera, et cetera. And with working with two cities, those processes can be different depending on what their processes are, what they want. So that's kind of where we are, and so we need to learn the best ways to work with the cities because we're going to have maintenance issues. And the $1.7 million, which is a lot, but it's a large building, we have lots of programming, we have increased our programming considerably, we have a lot of technology. Our budget doesn't have a whole lot of capital improvement. It has some maintenance, regular maintenance scheduled, et cetera. So it's figuring out when we do need these capital improvements, how do we do that and how do we work with it? And this is a learning curve.
Couple of questions. What is the area of repair? What's the size of the, do we know?
You could probably answer. And it's not on the front of Piedmont, it's by that side parking lot, so it's from the parking lot kind of up to the building. And just, salt may play a role, but it wasn't that whole plaza, it's one section, the rest of it's okay, so.
Has the request been made to Bristol, Virginia?
Bristol, Virginia has paid.
That's an interesting bit of information you just gave us, Mr. Broughton. Margaret, how did you vote on this as a board member?
I don't know that we voted. The finance committee recommended to the board that we, and I don't remember, did we vote on it? Anyway, it was either a vote or consensus. I supported bringing it to the cities. I thought it was a large enough capital fund, and it's the city's responsibility to help maintain the building, so I supported it.
Mr. Broughton, the issue or your concern is the timely request after the budget had been approved, or I'm trying to understand your position.
I think it sets a precedent that will come back the next time there's an off-budget need at the library, and let's buy this and just send a bill to the cities, and we'll get paid again because we got paid the first time. And so that's the, you know, we typically don't have these kind of conversations on this floor, but I thought this one was important because, again, it was an off-budget request. The library could have paid for it, never made a request. If they ever ran out of funds, we'd be right there with Bristol, Virginia supplementing it because they're our library. I mean, that's how it works. So, you know, it's either they draw into their reserve funds a little bit if they needed to to pay this bill, or they come and get ours, but ultimately, we own it, and when they're out of money, we're going to, we're going to help it. But it's the way this one came about that I didn't, Judd and I had some private conversations, and we were both, I think it's fair to say, a little uncomfortable about how this one developed. Typically, it would have been, library paid for it, life goes on, we give them $892,000 for next year, and life goes on. This one developed in a different way. So, you know, Bristol, Virginia's paid theirs. Do we pay ours? If you want to, of course, but I think the message needs to be we shouldn't have this type of off-budget request minimally. And if you say, "Well, no, they should pay for it," then what And if you say, well, no, they should pay for it, then what they'll end up doing is reimbursing Bristol, Virginia for their payment, is what they would do.
Is there a motion that we'd like to put on the floor?
I would like to make a motion to deny the request since it will create an undesirable precedent and the reserve fund is available to them.
Okay.
I second the motion.
All right, we've got a, we've got a motion from Michelle, thank you, and a second from Ben, to deny the request. Now, additional discussion from council on this motion.
I'll vote against it. I think, I mean, it may, partly, again, it's the precedent of being sure that we understand that we're responsible as cities for the capital care of that facility. Also, I'm not sure, I can't remember how much is in our reserve fund, we don't have a huge reserve fund, we have enough to cover it. But, anyway, so, I, I mean, I agree that we need to figure out a system, the deal is, is that we're in that learning curve and trying to figure out what the system is, so.
Anyone else wish to weigh in on this? Quite frankly, I, I was quite comfortable in, because of it setting precedent, denying this request. However, Mr. Broden, once you pointed out to us that Bristol, Virginia has already paid their share of this, that's also kinda muddies the water for me. Had they not already paid their share, I would be quite comfortable voting to deny this request. But with Bristol, Virginia already paying their share, I'm gonna have to vote against this motion simply because that puts us in a position where I think we, we need to pay our share since they've already done theirs, my two cents worth. Anyone else wish to weigh in before the vote?
We're, just so the council knows, we're not recommending you do or don't pay it, we just thought the conversation needed to take place here.
And, and of course, we've all done things that we're a little uncomfortable with, and as long as all the cards are on the table, knowing how it came about and stuff, I think is what this conversation was for, wasn't it, Jeff?
Okay. The motion that we have is to deny the request, we have a motion and a second, anyone wish to weigh in before we vote on this particular motion? Terry, we're ready for the vote. Wait, let, let's make sure we say an affirmative.
No, let's, let's, the, you have a motion to approve it, and if you don't wanna approve it, you vote no.
No, the motion was to deny it.
No, I know, but, but, but the, we do have an action item, you do have a document that everybody can read that says you're approving paying the library, and if you don't wanna do it, if you vote no, you've accomplished the same thing, and we don't have this motion that's written verbally, and it's, I mean, we know what you're voting on here. Just say, yes, I wanna pay for it, or no, I don't, and, and then you'll accomplish the same.
Jack, do we need to change, does Michelle need to clarify her motion?
If you wanna make the reverse-type motion, then somebody make the, the motion to approve it.
Michelle, would you, would you be willing to make the, withdraw your motion, and, and Ben, so that then we can make a motion to approve and then either vote it up or vote it in?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes.
All right, would somebody, Margaret, like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this payment, one-time payment for this, sidewalk repair for the library.
Okay. We have a motion in about a second.
I'll second it.
All right, thank you. All right, hold just a second, folks, I've gotta catch up my notes here. Okay.
The, the reason we're doing this is because sometimes in the past, we've had negative motions, and it's a little confusing when you vote yes on a negative motion, which you were trying to, it gets very confusing up here when you have a negative motion.
Is everybody quite comfortable where we're at?
Yes, yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve it, you can vote in the affirmative or not. Ms. Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Mayor Schumaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
No.
Councilwoman Dolan?
No.
Councilwoman Firehobben?
Yes.
All right, everybody's clear what we did? All right, good. That was interesting. Folks, that is the end of our, our regular agenda, now we have the consent agenda, and this thing is huge tonight. So, Mr. Broden, take a nice long drink of water before you start reading these, because I think we've got-
We'll take a bathroom break while you're reading.
I think we've got about 100 items here.
I'll read fast, and-
At the end of that time, if there's any of these that council members would like to pull off for discussion, please let us know. So, we vote consent agendas, a lot of it is housekeeping things and approval of this and that and the other, and, and so if, Mr. Broden will go through this.
I'll be happy to do that. Includes amendments of the May 1st council meeting, includes Resolution 1239 authorizing payment in support of Network Sullivan Partnership for fiscal 2013, includes Resolution 1240 authorizing payment in support of the United Way of Bristol, Tennessee, Virginia in fiscal 2013, includes Resolution 1241 authorizing an appropriation agreement with, with Rhythm, Bristol Rhythm and Roots Reunion, Inc., includes Resolution 1242 authorizing an appropriation agreement with the Birthplace of Country Music Alliance, Inc., includes a Resolution 1243 authorizing an appropriation agreement with Paramount Foundation, Inc., includes Resolution 1244 authorizing an appropriation agreement with the Bristol Chamber of Commerce for program support in fiscal 2013, includes Resolution 1246 authorizing the submittal of an application to the U.S. Department of Justice under its Bulletproof Vest Partnership Program, includes Resolution 1247 authorizing payment in support of the Bristol Public Library and Literacy Academy for fiscal 2013, includes Resolution 1248 declaring the intent of the city to reimburse, reimburse itself for certain expenditures with the proceeds of bonds or other obligations to be issued, includes Resolution 1249 approving an agreement with Severn Trent Environmental Services for the operation and maintenance of the Bristol Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant and related facilities, includes Resolution 1250 authorizing the execution of an inter-local cooperation agreement with the Emergency Communication District of the City of Bristol, includes Resolution 1252 awarding bid for mechanical bar screen chain and sprocket, includes Resolution 1253 authorizing the execution of a contract for the maintenance of state highways with Tennessee Department of Transportation, includes Resolution 1254 awarding a bid for the high-service pump motor replacement project, includes Resolution 1255 approving a grant agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation for the utilization of federal highway administration funds for the Bristol Metropolitan Planning Organization, and includes Resolution 1256 authorizing an appropriation agreement with the Bristol Chamber of Commerce for convention and visitor bureau services.
Thank you, Mr. Broden. Does there any council member wish to pull any of these off the agenda for discussion? Not hearing anything, do we have a motion to vote them as a whole?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you, Joel and Ben. We have a motion and a second, we'll vote down without discussion. Terry, we're ready for the vote.
Vice Mayor Stateen?
Yes.
Mayor Schumaker?
Yes.
Councilman Zandi?
Yes.
Councilwoman Dolan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Firehobben?
Yes.
That brings us to the end of our regular agenda and consent agenda. Mr. Broden, city manager's report.
Now, a couple of things, not to run us any longer than we need to, I'll remind council that our July meeting is when we will have 16 appointments on the agenda for consideration. We will be, we are actively taking applications at this time, you've seen several that have come in for one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight different boards that we're trying to populate, so you'll have a, a lot of ballots to cast next meeting. And the filing deadline for anybody that would be interested in applying for any of the boards is close of business on Tuesday, June 26th. All, all of the notices are on our website, they should be posted in the library and at the Evoque branch, and at Slater's. Okay? Uh, second thing I wanted to, and I'll have a memo for you, to memorialize this for you, just to report, uh, good news, it's always good to report good news, and the city was recently rerated for our fire suppression services by the Insurance Services Office, the ISO. Every fire department in the country, for the most part, is rated to identify its capabilities in terms of fire suppression as it relates to equipment, manpower, station locations, training, water supply, and communications, emergency communications. Well, this process is one that we just went through as a city, and, and we were, we retained a Class III rating from the ISO, which is an excellent rating, to give you an example, which we are currently, so we were able to maintain a Class III rating going forward. To give you a sense of a Class III rating, in the country, there's only 2,651 departments that have that rating or better, and that's out of over 47,000, so we're in the 95th percentile in terms of, we're at the top of, of fire departments in terms of how the insurance services organization looks at our community's fire suppression, and that's important because a lot of the insurance companies use that rating in terms of their underwriting to determine what property insurance rates will be based on a whole, low or high rating. So, we're, and we're in the 95th percentile in the country. In Tennessee, there's only 43 departments that are at a Class III or better, there's no Class I's, there's only five Class II's, and the rest, 40, the rest of that is Class III, and that's out of 1,000. So, again, we're at, we're in the 95th percentile in the state of Tennessee as well. So, this is, this is good news. One of the challenges the city has is it annexes property and spreads out, is the difficulty in maintaining a single classification for the entire community, which you're seeing more and more. Kingsport has the situation right now, as a matter of fact, where a part of the city is rated at one level and the other part maybe at a second, it's a split classification because of the distance from the nearest fire station, or the distance from fire hydrants and so forth. So, we were able to maintain a single classification, again, at Class III, and that benefits our property owners. It's supposed to benefit our property owners when insurance policies are written, and the ability of this community to protect real property improvements is the premiums based, to some extent, based on that. So, good work to Bob Barnes and his staff, Bill Sora and his staff, Blaine Wade and Communications Staff. It touches a lot of our departments, and they all should be recognized for doing, keeping a three, and every time, it gets tougher and tougher to keep at a level, and more importantly, not to get into a split classification, so. Good work to, to everybody in the room. Okay? So, that was the other good thing. I, I'll just give you a quick little heads up on one item of the project, and then I'll be quiet, and that's our Beaver Creek Flood Reduction Project. Everybody's seen the progress downtown at the former Sears Department Store site. They're probably two weeks out, maybe three weeks, worst case, in completing their work, and that project will be done. Terry Napier will follow up with some musical instruments once we get delivered and can install those there, so. So, Beaver Creek downtown, Phase 1, we're pretty much done. The Corps has decided to move ahead with the work on Sixth Street near the old hotel there where it crosses the highway because of the excellent contractor that's on site. So, they're actually gonna go ahead and move into phase, the second phase of work, which is Sixth Street, and that contractor will, will be mobilizing over on Sixth Street here in a-
Sixth Street Extension.
Sixth Street Extension, will be mobilizing in, in a week or so, so. And that project will not take too long, nor is it very expensive. So, Phase 1, pretty much done, Sixth Street Extension will be done soon, and they are working on a path to get the remaining phases, which is Sugar Hollow Dam and the work on A Street, get those under contract in 2013. So, everything's pushing ahead, and I don't know how many years it's been now, guys, 50 years, 70 years, how many years it's been? We're now seeing where we're coming to the end of that, to that project, and, and the good news, and I haven't been able to share this yet with Virginia, but I will tomorrow, our cost is only gonna be about 40% of what originally we expected it to be. So, whereas at one time, originally, the cities were each gonna pay about 800,000, and that was 10 years ago. Most recently, the estimate was gonna be about 1.2 million dollars for each city. Right now, given where they think they are and some estimates for the remaining work, we're probably gonna be about half a million dollars each, so we're, we're gonna be 40% really of the most recent estimate of our local share to make the project. So, lots of good things with that project, and we're gonna have a little more money in the bank than we anticipated because of their very conservative estimates and the real-time construction bids that they're getting. So, good news, I'll, I'll have a memo on that, memorialize that as well for you tomorrow, but that, that was good news, and it's moving, moving right ahead. As I said, they'll be on Sixth Street Extension next week. And I think that's everything I wanted to share with you tonight. I'll be, of course, available to answer any questions that you might have later in the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Broden. Who else on the city council would like to share with us this evening?
Go ahead, I'll, I'll do mine later.
Okay.
I don't know. I had a meeting with Fusion Soccer Team, told them about the budgetary renovation for the White Top, and there are three soccer clubs that are going to merge as of this week, and we will see a lot more activity on the White Top, and hopefully, that part of our activity in our city will grow next year. We met with the city, and the car show will be downtown Bristol, August 10th, on a Friday night, and the streets will be closed. We're anticipating to have hopefully about between 500 to 700 cars downtown. And I saw the new fire truck today, yes, congratulations to our fire department, and that's a great asset to our city. And for closing, we always admire ourselves to have a balanced budget, so what I'd like to propose to the council that keep it that way, and any extra expenses that comes that is not within our budget, do not approve it, and let's have a balanced budget going forward and budget appropriately. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben, who else?
I just wanna say that I'm super excited about Mumford &amp; Sons coming on August the 11th, so it'll be the next day after the car show, and it's, it's a great honor, it's, we're one town out of a dozen worldwide that they're gonna be coming to. There's a lot of promotion behind it, everybody's excited about it, and I just wanna invite you guys to get tickets and come out and see Mumford &amp; Sons, August 11th in downtown Bristol.
12,000 tickets sold the first day.
Yeah.
160,000 the first day.
It'll be sold out, for sure.
It is.
Yeah.
Ms. Margaret?
Sure. I believe Celebrate Bristol is working on its Star Spangled Saturday, June 30th, for the Fourth of July celebration. A while back, when we started doing our Fourth of July celebration, which we had not done previously, we did it the second year after our sesquicentennial, partly because Richard Ball said this community's not gonna go another year without celebrating our Independence Day. So, we appreciate him and the, and the committee that plans it every year, but they chose to have it the Saturday closest to the Fourth of July, so it wouldn't step on toes of other communities in our area, so it'd be a little different some of the time. So, it's June 30th, and I'll be sending an email to see who's gonna be around, they're asking about the floats, to see if city council members are gonna be here, willing to ride a float, and then they'll go ahead and, and line up one of those, and that's always a lot of fun. I wanna just say congratulations again to Terry and her department for being recognized again, and a great job that y'all- again, and a great job that y'all, y'all do, and Channel 16 is a lot of fun. Steel Creek Explorer is really good, and Jeremy Stout does a great job being on camera. And that leads me to say that nature camps are starting, so, and summer playgrounds, lots of things going on. Our library has lots of programming, children's programs, children's reading programs, both at Evoca and downtown. We have a dynamic teen librarian, Pam Neal, who was at Bristol, Virginia School System as a librarian. She's retired from there, and we're blessed with her, and she has teens, tweens, young adults, and also has a program at Evoca. I think we got a really good water report, which, you know, we kinda take those for granted, 'cause they're always good. So, we really appreciate the crew out there, and there's a nice video on Channel 16 that talks about our water and water quality. And I'll just add, lots of music, and a lot of it, you don't have to buy tickets for. Downtown Center on Tuesdays and Thursday nights. Heard somebody complimenting how nice it was to bring your family and enjoy it. Also, in the park, and that's this Friday evening, is gonna be, and you feed us too. So, anyway, there's food and music at Steel Creek Park, and it's where the, where the concert area, Shell is.
What, what time?
At 7:00 Friday night at Steel Creek Park. And then we have Border Bash, that we have been contributing a little bit more to the last several years, so that we could be twice a month. And we just had one of those, and we'll be having it again a week from Friday. So, lots, lots of good stuff. So, I think that's it.
Thank you, Margaret. Joel, did you say you've got something you wanna weigh in?
Yeah, I figured I'd go last, 'cause I have a feeling it's gonna rattle some people. From time to time, we have people come and address city council during the appearance of citizens. And they address us with complaints they have against the city, things that we can solve, also things that we can't solve, things that the person needs to take responsibility for, for their actions, for their decisions. Even though the people sometimes don't agree with the way the problem was addressed, doesn't mean that we have not taken it seriously, and that we have not addressed the problem. We addressed all of the problems. They may not like the outcome, but we still address it. I also sit on the East Hill Cemetery Board. And last month, there was a young lady in here talking about crossing the street on East State Street, so that she can take her dog for a walk over in the cemetery. And when people talk about taking their dogs for a walk, it brings one thing to mind, when I take a dog for a walk. And personally, I think that's inappropriate, of somebody taking a dog for a walk in the cemetery, 'cause I think that is hollow land. I think people need to have more respect for people that are buried there, for the families of the people that have people buried there, and that it's not the proper place to walk a dog. And with that, I'll be quiet.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Terry Talbot had a opportunity to, to recognize the article in the paper that the Roger Brown had printed there today. Roger took off. He, you know, he, he's got that deadline, and I always like to thank Roger when he, when he does a job well done. You know, a lot of times, you know, I've said many times in the past, if, if the newspaper doesn't, doesn't write the article, it might as well, it didn't happen. So if they're not here to, to tell you what the city council does, and you don't watch it on TV, now that we've got it going live, the folks don't know what we've done here tonight. So I always wanna thank Roger for that. Ms. Wolf, I forgot to recognize you earlier, when I was looking at you. It's kind of, kinda a little darker there, and Mr. Boer's hiding you a little bit there, so I, I forgot to, forgot to recognize you, from our Evoca branch of the library. You know, there was another article in the, in the paper this week, that, that I was, I thought Roger did a great job on. It's about a, about a guy named Broden. It's kind of, I got a phone call the other day from somebody who let me know that our city manager had just kinda quietly, actually, folks weren't supposed to know about it just yet, because it's supposed to be announced at Tennessee Municipal League Conference, which starts this weekend in Knoxville. But Roger Brown just happened to call me that day, and I thought, he needed to know, because people in Bristol need to know. Our city manager, Jeff Broden, has been named City Manager of the Year from Tennessee Municipal League. That's not because we wrote up something, or campaigned, or tried to, we didn't even know about it. His peers, the other city managers, the other city leaders across the state of Tennessee recognize that Jeff does a fantastic job. They recognize that we have a first-rate city manager in Jeff Broden, and we didn't even help him. We didn't even know it was gonna happen, but Jeff Broden, job well done. City Manager of the Year for the entire state of Tennessee. Folks, that's 95 counties, and I don't even know how many cities who have city managers, but a bunch of them. Congratulations, Mr. Broden. With that said, I think we've covered everything else. Ben's already talked about that cool new ride that Bob Barnes has got out front there with the ladder on it. Folks, it's been a, it's been a wonderful opportunity, again, to serve you here at the city council. And with that, our meeting's adjourned.